Good evening, everyone. Can we please have a motion to reconvene into open session?
I'll move to reconvene.
Second?
Second.
At eight eleven?
Seventy nine.
Oh, seven eleven. Thank you. Rock call.
Iron A, Palace.
Aye.
Butler.
Aye.
Caballero.
Aye.
Trent.
Aye.
Steinfeld.
Aye.
Gonzalez, aye. Jimenez?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Can we please stand up for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can we please have a rock call to establish quorum? Members present are to respond with here or present.
Palace?
Here.
Oh, sorry. Jimenez?
Here.
Steinfeld?
Here.
Gonzalez, here.
Butler?
Here.
Caballero?
Here.
Trent?
Here.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Elizabeth Jimenez. I'm the president of the board, School District 100. Buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Elizabeth Jimenez, la presidenta de la mesa directiva del Distrito 100. Gracias por estar aquí presentes. Si necesitan traducción, para su derecha está la señorita Juny para que le puedan pedir traducción. Thank you, and thank you, everyone, for being here. Superintendent's report.
Yes, good evening. Thank you, everyone, for being here to honor some very special people tonight. So, we are here to honor our retirees as well as some recognition of service to our school district. So, I'd like to invite first Principal Michelle Howard, who's going to kick off our recognition, as well as I'd like to invite the board up over here so we can shake hands and recognize all of our retirees.
Lupe, if you can come up too, please.
You don't need to be there. Today, we are excited to celebrate the hard work and dedication of Heritage's wonderful Assistant Head Custodian, Guadalupe De La Riba. He is someone whose dedication, reliability, and heart have helped shape the daily rhythm of Heritage. Lupe has been the backbone of so much of what happens here, from setting up for school dances, these board meetings, after-school activities and programs, all of our athletic events, and everything in between. He is always ready to lend a hand, often before anyone even asks. Lupe has high expectations for himself and others while ensuring he has a high, while ensuring he has attention to detail while having a positive approach always. He has worked so hard behind the scenes to make this building run smoothly, but his impact has been front and center always. It's hard to imagine our halls without your presence, but we know you've more than earned this next chapter. We hope retirement brings you rest, joy, and time to do all the things that bring you happiness. We know you're excited to spend time with your wonderful family, who we've all learned so much about over these years. And we also, I'm sure you're very excited to also not be startled by me as I try to ask you to do things when you're busy working throughout the night. So, congratulations on our retirement, and we appreciate all you've done for Heritage over these years. So, thank you. Yes, go on over.
Just so all of our retirees know, we are going to take pictures also. We'll take a break after all of the speeches, and then also take some additional pictures as well, too. So, please don't leave. Okay, if Mr. Matt Dillon could please also come up?
I know, I'm sorry. Okay, tonight is not, no, I'm not. So, tonight is not going to be about the past sixteen years that Matt and I have spent together, but it is going to be about all the wonderful things that Matt has done for Heritage and the Berwyn community. So, I'm not going to look at you. So, tonight, we have the privilege of celebrating the remarkable career of Mr. Matt Dillon, who has been an integral part of Heritage Middle School since 2002. For over two decades, Matt has served as a special education teacher, dedicating his work to creating a space where every student is seen, heard, and valued. His classroom was more than a place for academic learning. It was a safe place where students were encouraged to be fully authentically themselves. Matt's passion for an inclusive education extended far beyond the classroom. He worked closely with the Safe Schools Alliance, actively promoting environments where diversity was embraced and every student felt they belonged. Whether advocating for students with disabilities, or LGBTQ+ youth, or any child who just needed a champion, Matt was always there for them. In addition to his work with students, Matt is a trusted staff member who has played a vital role in so many people's careers. His presence is dependable, calm, and collaborative, which has allowed him to be a successful team leader. We were it together.
We worked the best!
In the past, and a union representative for so many years. I know I'm not the only person who feels so lucky to have worked with Matt Dillon. I will be forever grateful that sixteen years ago, when I started at Heritage, Matt was across the hall and would become a constant in my career, always pushing me to grow and be my cheerleader. You could always count, and you can always count on Matt, to step up and help wherever he was needed while thinking about what was best for Heritage, because his why has always been at the forefront of how he has approached his career, continuously seeing the potential of young people and the importance of students feeling safe and accepted. While we are excited for Matt to enjoy his retirement, not really, but it's fine, and for him to spend more time with his family, see magic shows, enjoy good food, and take care of himself, is important. He also knows that he will be missed more than words can say, but your impact will continue to shape our school and myself for forever. So, thank you for all you've done, and congratulations on your retirement.
All right, Kathy, you going to come join us up here, please? All right, well, it's my honor tonight to recognize Kathy O'Connor and the journey of her incredible twenty-seven years as Irving's School Secretary. Why is it that we often take someone's gift gifts for granted only to realize their full impact when we fit, when we're faced with their absence? As we pray for your retirement, Kathy, we find ourselves asking, how are we ever going to do this without you? As the all-important School Secretary, you've been the master of the Irving universe. You've headed off major disasters, anticipated needs before anyone even realized they had them, and held the confidences of many who trusted you. You manage the crazy and the crazies. You've calmed troubled waters. You've been the welcoming face of Irving, greeting everyone who walks through the doors. And let's be honest, there were probably plenty of days when you wanted to hide behind that wall, whether it was a staff member, a parent, or even one of us administrators coming your way. But you never did. You always responded, usually in that friendly way we all recognize. That kindness and grace are why so many people are here to celebrate your career. Everyone has a story, and the older I get, the more I appreciate the power of someone's story, because it defines them. One of the most defining elements of Kathy's story is how deeply rooted she is in Berwyn. Berwyn is in Kathy's DNA, and undoubtedly, she's just part of Berwyn's DNA, too. Kathy Hessler is a hometown girl, born to parents who were original Berwynites. In 1933, her mother wasn't just born in Berwyn, she was born in a house in Berwyn. Kathy's grandparents owned a dry cleaning business in town which anchored the family and the community. They likely knew everyone by name. When you own a business like that, you learn what it means to work hard and how to treat people well. Kathy's mom stayed home for a time, then later worked as a church secretary. Her dad sold homes for a builder in the northwest suburbs. They worked hard to give their family a great life, and it's clear that's where Kathy learned how to show up every day, on time, ready to work, greeting parents and the public with a steady hand. Those early lessons shaped the way she served our school, school community. Kathy started school at Emerson and went on to graduate from high school here. She dated a young man in high school whom she soon married after graduation. That young land, young man later became an alderman and eventually the mayor of Berwyn. Kathy and her family bought a home within walking distance of Irving, and that's where her long connection to the school began. She quickly joined the PTA, and her presence didn't go unnoticed. Principal Dan Lane offered her a part-time position helping out in the main office, and from that moment on, Irving got lucky. Kathy brought with her not only the work ethic passed down from her family, but also an unwavering pride in her town. She carried those values into her role every single day and helped our school shine. Twenty-seven years later, the rest is history. All of her children graduated from Irving, as did several nieces and nephews. Two of her children met their future spouses at the school, and her daughter has been teaching in District 100 since graduating college. In every real and meaningful way, Kathy is a pillar of Irving, a rock, the kind of foundation every school needs to function smoothly. She has a sixth sense for what is needed. As one teacher put it, "She knows what I'm missing before I'm missing it." As principal, I can tell you Kathy has often been the organization behind the organization, and in my case, often the one organizing my disorganization. And while she's steady and professional, she's also fiercely sentimental. Kathy is a gemstone, and like any true gem, she has grown attached to some of the relics of Irving's past. I always knew when I tried to rearrange the front office, or remove an old photo, or faded artwork, I was treading on sacred ground. Kathy would say, "Oh, that's from so-and-so's class," and tell me the story behind it. I usually let her hold on until she turned around and I quietly snuck it into the trash. Sorry, Kathy. I couldn't begin to list all the ways Kathy has helped our school, but when I asked her what part of the job she enjoyed most, she didn't hesitate, connecting with and helping families. She understands what it's like to be a parent in Berwyn, and she knows that life isn't always perfect. When hardship touched her own life, she drew from the deep well of grit passed down by her parents and grandparents. Those are the kinds of life lessons Kathy has brought into this school community: grace, strength, loyalty, grit. And finally, more than anything, Kathy checks in. Every morning, we have our five-minute visit, just enough time to talk about the day, about our lives, about whatever, whatever's on our minds. She texts me when I'm on vacation just to see how it's going. I'm sure she does that with so many people. That's one of the things I'll miss most. Kathy doesn't just care about Irving, she cares about us. As one staff member said, "She is always there to help, even on the weekends. She's the reason the place runs smoothly." And many said this, "We will miss her heart, her warmth, her updates, her texts, her kindness, her wordle hints, her candy stash, her pride in Irving." Kathy said she's most looking forward to sleeping in during retirement. Kathy, you've earned every single peaceful morning, but please don't stop checking in. The building won't feel the same without you, but your impact will always be here. Kathy, thank you for all your support. I needed you, and I will miss you. Let's have a round of applause for the one and only Kathy O'Connor.
We are here tonight to honor Terry Prendeville, who has started her retirement early because she's watching from her couch. No, she did, she did say that she would prefer to watch it there. So, Terry, this is for you. Terry Prendeville's creativity and big heart have defined her identity as a teacher. If you walk past her classroom, you will notice her second graders in full surgical gear, with the room transformed into an operating room. Don't be confused, her students practice contractions using bandage apostrophes. This is the type of hands-on learning Terry believes children should experience in the classroom. Most recently, her second graders use keynote to celebrate their family's immigration stories after their amplify unit. Terry's classroom is the epitome of kindness, warmth, and fun. Every year, she spends time and effort into including positive quotes, fun spaces for student leaders, alternative seating arrangements, or even motivational games or incentives to celebrate student achievements. Her students are consistently practicing growth mindset and applying their problem-solving skills to celebrate their successes. Terry is synonymous with creative theatrical production. For years, this passionate educator has been the visionary behind our talent shows. Yep, you heard that right. She puts together the most exquisite staging, choreography, scripts, and most beautifully, she lets her students lead the show. Our students are the lead actors during the entire production, and Terry works secretly behind the curtain, like she is tonight, to ensure every detail is perfectly executed. She has won our Komenski heart for directing a powerful platform for our students and staff to shine.
Did we mention that Terry has the biggest heart, but also does the biggest and most extravagant? She is Komenski's favorite holiday party host because of her hospitality and exquisite decor. She and her, and her secret elf, Jim, her husband, have dedicated countless hours decorating and preparing to welcome our Komenski family into their home. The memories you have helped us create are priceless. From the white elephant gifts to the rides on top of the retired fire engine parading with Santa's sleigh and for, and forever remaining, will remain in our memories. Feeling that cold air in our faces while we sang loudly through the streets until our extremities felt numb is not easily forgotten. Terry and Jim, you have outdone yourselves. Thank you for embracing us with so much love all these years. Terry, Terry goes overboard. Did I already say that? She is the proudest Irish educator there is. You cannot miss St. Patrick's Day because Terry will remind you with her extraordinary green attire from head to toe. She ensures everyone in the classroom celebrates their Irish heritage with green beads and party favors. Terry is the Irish queen in all things DIY. Just ask Matt and Chris, our custodial team. They often wonder how something was moved or mounted. Terry was found, always found a way to make it happen. In all seriousness, Terry's creativity and passion for reaching all of our students have significantly impacted their lives. Thank you for your sleepless nights working on lesson plans and the sacrifices you made as a family to make learning extraordinary in the classroom. Terry and Jim, you take a piece of our hearts with you. Your legacy will transcend, and we will remember your big heart and passion. Thank you. We will make sure to take a photo with you, Terry. We will make sure to take a photo with you, Terry.
All right. It is my honor to recognize Mr. Dennis Peer tonight. Mr. Peer retires this year after thirty-five years of service in the field of education. From the beginning of his time here in District 100, Mr. Peer has been a champion for the whole child. He brought community together with his Family Engagement Committee. Whether it was a family game night, pottery painting, a Chicago Runs race, salsa making, or a bingo night, families connected, bonded, and left Emerson with an activity to do together. Mr. Peer understands the importance of family and celebrating family roots. He made it his mission to have a Dia de los Muertos altar, where all students and staff brought in photographs and mementos from loved ones that had passed and shared memories. Many families were brought to tears sharing, and this event will continue at Emerson because of Mr. Peer's heartfelt plans. Mr. Peer was instrumental in keeping the consistency of responsive classroom practices as part of the heartbeat of Emerson. He modeled morning meetings and welcomed new staff members to join. He recognized the strengths of individual students during this special time. Social-emotional learning has been interwoven into the work of Mr. Peer, whether it be a read aloud, a quick video clip, or an additional time to connect and talk with students. The social impact that Mr. Peer has had on our school is immeasurable. He has worked to establish the Emerson Caring Closet, collecting donations of clothes, hats, gloves, boots, and jackets for families in need. Families were always welcome at the Caring Closet, and our students loved to go shopping there. Mr. Peer developed the Emerson Garden with his co-teacher of many years, Mrs. Michelle Bozick. The Pollinator Garden continues to thrive and grow because of his care, and has been established for our students and our families to enjoy for years to come. Mr. Peer is an outstanding educator, a believer in the whole child, and a staff member that truly believes in the power of community. He practiced what, practices what he preaches in striving to create a better world every day. He will be missed. Dennis, we know you will enjoy your years of retirement with Bernardo, Taylor, your parents, friends, and family. Congratulations.
Good evening, everyone. Oh, I didn't even have to call her. See, she's still on the ball. Are you sure you're ready to retire? All right. Glasses. Good evening, everyone. It's an honor and just a bit sad to stand here tonight as we bid fond and yet, fond and yet fabulous farewell to someone who has not only shaped minds, but also hearts for the last twenty-nine years. Today, we celebrate the retirement of Ellen Ross, our beloved reading specialist, dedicated educator, and low-key book wizard. Now, Ellen's teaching journey started, began in nineteen eighty-seven, when big hair was in, mixtapes were essential, and the only thing that's more reliable than your Walkman was Ellen's passion for helping students learn. Since then, she has taught every grade level from kindergarten to sixth, basically all little humans under the age of twelve. She's seen it all, glitter glue disasters, epic book fairs, enough phonics charts to probably wallpaper the Grand Canyon. Her career spanned three schools in two districts. Ten years in, oh, perk, and eleven years at Piper, and these last eight wonderful years here at Pers, oh, not here, but at Pershing. And if we're being honest, I think Pershing got the best deal. Ellen has poured her heart into our students, our teachers, and our community. If you've ever seen Ellen work with a reluctant reader, you know the magic she brings. Somehow, she can get a second grader to read Charlotte's Web like a Marvel movie and get them to love every word of it. Her calm presence, deep expertise, and endless patience have made her an anchor in our building. Now, let's talk about her real pride and joy, her family. Mike, her partner, threw it all, and her amazing kids, Will and Grace, not because of the TV show, but they are Will and Grace. Grace is continuing the family tradition as a special ed teacher herself, proof that teaching isn't just a job, it's a calling. And Will, he works in transportation logistics and is out there throwing frisbees like a rock star, keeping Ellen's travel schedule exciting and completely unpredictable. But let's be honest, what Ellen is really looking forward to in retirement is this: no more bells, no more schedules, no more early morning staff meetings with coffee that just isn't strong enough. Instead, her days will now include swimming, reading books, reading book clubs, embrace yourselves, doing whatever she wants. I've heard she said she may even schedule naps like a boss. Ellen, we are going to miss your humor, your warmth, your wisdom, and the way you always knew just the right book to recommend, whether to a student or a stressed-out teacher. I'll always, I'm gonna miss you when I say something just random that comes out of mouth, you going, "Ooh, ooh." There's a lot of those, huh? Thank you for twenty-nine years of making a difference. You've left your mark on hundreds, maybe thousands, of students and educators alike. And now, it's your turn to write the next chapter, pun fully intended. We hope your retirement is full of joy, peace, a stack of good books, and maybe just a little bit of professional frisbee spectating. We love you, Ellen. Happy retirement.
All right. Tonight, I get to sing the praises of Mary Ellen Connolly. She is retiring from a forty-two-year career as a physical therapist, and much of those years were spent working with our students in District 100. Mary Ellen's story begins in Niles. She was raised by a fireman and a no-nonsense mom who instilled the fierce work ethic in all their children. She has five siblings, three older brothers, and a younger sister. She learned early how to keep up, stand out, and find meaning in her life. Somewhere between those early jobs and the sibling debates over the Cubs and the Sox, she began to understand what it meant to show up for others. All of us looking back can point to key persons and events that shaped the people we are today. Mary Ellen points to her high school volunteer work at the Y with Mr. Lou. Mr. Lou's dedication to helping kids with severe disabilities in the pool set her up for the next stage of her life. After graduating college, Mary Ellen earned her master's degree at UIC and began working as a physical therapist at Homeschool in Oak Park. Back then, Homeschool serviced the students with severe disabilities from all over the surrounding communities. It was there that she first connected with Berwyn South, who at the time were sending students via longtime bus driver Frank K. In the mid nineteen eighties, when Berwyn South and North pulled their students back, Mary Ellen didn't miss a step. She started her own contract and began working at Hiawatha in nineteen eighty-nine. She has worked in nearly every surrounding community since. As a physical therapist, Mary Ellen is just like that no-nonsense mom that raised her. You can find her pushing kids to believe in themselves. She gets visibly annoyed when her kids are babied or over-cared-for. She believes in their strength, pushes them beyond their comfort zones, and demands their best. Years later, those same kids, stronger, more independent, have come back to thank her for pushing them to their limits. She's also a powerful advocate for her kids. She's never afraid to knock on a principal's door, a director of special ed's office, or even the superintendents, to let them know exactly what she thinks. Just as she pushes her own kids to grow and succeed, she pushes us to be better for them, challenging us to rise to their needs and meet them with the high expectations they deserve. Forty-two years as a physical therapist working with kids represents the very essence of a meaningful lifetime of work. But it's her next cause that equally informs who Mary Connolly, Mary Ellen Connolly is. In nineteen eighty-six, she co-founded Thumby Special, a nonprofit dedicated to ensuring children with special needs receive the equipment and experience they deserve. What began with a mission to provide adaptive equipment, wheelchairs, walkers, bikes, ramps, has grown into something extraordinary. Thumby Special funds camp scholarships, delivers Christmas gifts to families in needs, supports kids who have fallen on hard times, gives back to their parents, and so much more. The organization raises around a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, and seventy thousand dollars going directly into the Berwyn area. Her Christmas wrapping party is legendary. Every year, Mary Ellen gathers donations from across the area, brand-new toys, bikes, gift cards, clothes. Then she invites all the social workers from the area to her home. With a crew of friends, she wraps presents for kids in need. The social workers go on a shopping spree through her basement, which looks like a mini Toys R Us, picking out the perfect gifts for the students and families. They leave with a carload of wrapped presents ready to bring to joy to homes across Berwyn South, South, and countless other communities. Mary Ellen is most proud of the sustainability of this work. Decades later, it's still, still going strong, just like her. Mary Ellen points to her faith as the North Star to her life of service. To that, I would say, "Well done, good and faithful servant." Mary Ellen, you make me think, and I imagine all of us think and hope, that we can find our own special cause that move and drive us to make this world a better place. Your drive and steadfastness is inspiring. Mary Ellen has raised four healthy children, and she now enjoys several grandchildren. She's looking forward to a well-earned retirement filled with travel to Europe, Africa, and New Zealand. Not rushed, but fully present. There will be time for golf, pickleball, and days spent by the lake at the Twelfth Street Beach in Chicago. Mary Ellen, thank you for your years of toiling in the vineyard. You've changed lives. Please join me in celebrating the extraordinary career and impact of Mary Ellen. Congratulations on your retirement.
Unlike the others, I was told I get to talk, so I waited forty years for this. Thumby Special has been my joy, my, my life, my life serving this community. So everything I'm gonna say here tonight is based on love and how much I love what I do. I never went to work. My kids will tell you that. My family will tell you, I never went to work. I just loved my babies, and I called them my babies. And my kids are very successful kids. But what I want to talk about today is that, about twenty years ago, Jane McGrath, she was a secretary here in Berwyn, she passed away suddenly. It was, it was horrible. She was a dear friend of mine. And I wanted to honor her, and we did it, honor. In her, we started the Moms' Day Out, where I took moms of kids with similar disabilities, whether that would be autism, or physically disabled, but cognitively good, or very cognitively involved. So each mom had their separate groups so they can connect to people. And I, these moms, I can't even talk to you, are my heroes, that they are doing every day, right? Every day, with really some really tough challenges. But to see them come together and share their stories in a safe space is just a very powerful, powerful experience for me. And I, and I am, I am a very religious person, and I'm gonna tell you that the Holy Spirit is in the room every single time. And so this year, I saw that there was a need that in our schools, and this is just, I'm just giving you my honesty here, that sped teachers are, are really, really hanging on, okay? And we decided to do a day out for the sped teachers. So we took out fifty sped teachers from Berwyn North and Berwyn South, and we collaborated on this opportunity like a Moms' Day Out. And I, I want you to hear these notes, because I thought they were so impactful moving forward. I'm not gonna be here, but I, I want you to know how much, as much as I loved on my kids, I loved on the people that I work with. Julie's like a work daughter back there, right, Joel? Because my own kids couldn't show up, you know? Right? But Julie loves me. I don't know, are they? So, these are some of the notes that I received at that, that thing, at, at our teacher's day out, that Thumby Special provided for your teachers like we did the Moms' Day. "Oftentimes, we are overlooked. Our hard work, dedication, and commitment are the reason we keep going. It's nice to be appreciated and celebrated because of all that we do. Today was such an amazing treat. Never I've been so recognized for my work in such a heartfelt and generous way. This day will fill my cup and get me through the rest of the year. I can't point into words what an amazing day this meant to me. As a full-time parent and mom of two under three, I can, it can become very hard to put myself first. I give, give, give to my kids at school, and I go home and do the same. It's, it was an amazing day. Teacher's Night Out was an incredible experience. I felt appreciated, and in this day and age, it doesn't happen often. Your generosity is so appreciated, as the parent in our district feeling the love from others that see us is so empowering. Thank you for making me feel special today. Sometimes, we don't feel appreciated by all that we do. I love what I do, and it's been very rewarding. Having a teacher's day out was so special to me. It has been a very hard school year, and grateful for this wonderful day. Thank you for making my day so special. I never had an experience like this. I never had someone to think about me like this. Thank you so much for all that you do. Today was very special. I know that it definitely meant a lot to me and many others to feel acknowledged. Sometimes, working in the classroom is so difficult that we tend to just keep pushing and lose why we, the why behind what we do. I cannot thank you enough for the experience I had at your event. You made every person there feel extremely joyful, appreciated individually. I saved the letters for when I got home, and it made a perfect end to a wonderful day. The kind words and support are so appreciated. We definitely don't get that enough at work, as we are in that last part of the year where it feels like we are burning out and losing our motivation. This put a bit of pep in my step, which will benefit not only me, but my class, my children. So what I am here to tell you, because I am somebody, anybody that knows me, I'm gonna tell you what's on my mind. Teachers, there's a shortage of teachers in this nation, and we need to find ways to value our staff, that they feel the same kind of love. It's a really hard job. There's a lot of testing that they're doing, and they're tired of all the tests, you know? I get teacher appreciation week, but let's start Berwyn South a teacher appreciation year. Let's not do all of these things in May when they're hanging on. Let's do it all throughout the year. Let's show our teachers what value they have, our custodians, what value they have, on written notes. Day, notes that, that touch the soul, because I think an email just kind of misses the soul, right? This is a lost art, notes. It's hard because we're all so overworked. I said, when, if we get recognition, and when you, they advocate, listen to them. I feel like they're, they feel that they're not being heard, and I want them to be heard. My kids talk about their state report. They talk about all the projects they do. It's like there's no time for projects anymore. It's ice, it's math test, testing, unit testing, eight times a time, seven math test, time, test, test. I had to mourn, I told this to John. I told this to John, what I thought the end of my chapter in schools would look like because I was there in the glory years when there was so much fun in life and joy. We need joy back. And we need to be kind. We're preaching it everywhere in our, everywhere we're preaching, "Be kind, be kind." Are we kind? Every day in the hallway. Get in the classrooms, meet these teachers. It is a job that they do not for the pay, right? It's not for the pay. They love on these babies. They love, I call them all babies, but they love on these kids. And they need to feel that love just the same. And that's what I hope. I would say, try an institute day that they're playing games and meeting people and having fun, you know? Bring joy back. Because I seriously would run the institute for you because they would feel loved. And I think that love has to be brought back into our students. So thank you for your time, and I appreciate it. But I loved every minute that I worked for Berwyn South. Thank you.
All right, we are going to take a short break. So please feel free to take some pictures. We have the Berwyn South backdrop in the hallway if you'd like to take some pictures. And we'll reconvene the meeting in about 10 minutes or so. Thank you so much for coming, and congratulations to all of our staff members recognized tonight.
So for the education center update, they have installed storm sewers and have removed about 50 semi-loads of dirt from the site. They continue to cut down the site to subgrade level and they will, are just finishing up that sewer work that I just mentioned. And we will also be working with the city to cap a water main that enters the site. So essentially, it's a lot of groundwork going on right now, but they have been working every day. We do, our superintendent for the construction company is on site, so you'll see that there's a trailer there. He's there every day overseeing the project. So we are off to a start and we will, off to a good start, and we will continue to provide updates on the construction. We did have seven FOIA's this month. They're all in board book and have been shared with the board as well. Variety of data topics this month. We received quite a few FOIA's. Our dashboard, you can see our updated attendance. We are really working hard to get our families registered. As of right now, we have about forty, forty-seven percent of our families who are either fully registered or started registration. So we are really trying to encourage any students who are returning next year to register before the end of the school year because we need to make sure that we are planning for our classes for next year. And I will turn it over to Jenny for the financial report.
Thanks, Mary. I have a couple things. We'll start with the bank balance. As of today is seventy-two point three million. Our revenue for the month of May to date is three point three million. Our cash flow short, you can see up on the screen and also in board book, our cash flow short, our revenue for the month of April was four point five million for a total of fifty-nine million. Our expenses for the month of April are four point three million. Year-to-date is fifty-two point three million. Can you go to the grant snapshot on the next one? This is just a snapshot of our various grants and the total grant amount, total expenditures, payment that's been received. Grants are coming in nicely. Can you go to the next one, which is the amended FY twenty-five budget? So just a reminder, last month, you approved the tentative amended FY twenty-five budget. The grant managers, all the different grant people then re-amend their grants, and then I amend our overall budget. So it's on display for thirty days, which is really, we do it longer. It's more like forty-five to sixty days. And then the board will approve the final amended budget in June, and it has to be sent to the state right away before the end of June. Then in July, you'll adopt the tentative FY twenty-six budget for the new school year. So what I want to point out is the FY twenty-five budget, this is what I call my short form. It's easier to understand than the thirty-two-page Excel spreadsheet, which is on our website. If you can go to the end of the second page, Ernesto. So the first column is the budget that was adopted in September. The April, the second column is the actuals to the month date. So the fifty-two point three million in expenses and fifty-nine point one million in revenue is exactly what I just reported off the cash flow short. But it has it more broken down into individual salaries, benefits, et cetera. So then the next column to the right is the amended budget. And we're looking like we're right on target. Grant managers, you'll know, I did update all of the account numbers so that we shouldn't have any issues going forward. The next page, Ernesto, do the budget assumptions. Did I give that one to you? Yes. Okay. So here we have our budget assumptions, are things that we start to talk about and think about as we develop the FY twenty-six budget. So I have it broken down into two sections, your revenues and your expenditures. Your revenues, your levy is capped at CPI, which is two point nine percent. Evidence-based funding, right now, we're hoping, is going to stay flat. Federal and state grants, we know are going to be reduced because you have the ending of the COVID money. And mandated categorical funding, these are what we know as of now, as of today. Manded categoricals are things such as, that's your state funding, that's things in regular transportation, special ed transportation, private facility reimbursement. Private facility are students that are placed out of district for certain IEP needs, for special education. So we're looking at a seventy-one proration in regular transportation, sixty-one percent in special ed transportation, and seventy in private facility reimbursement. That's all, excuse me. Sorry about that. Expenditures. Next section, you have your unit, your union and board-approved increases, your benefits, an increase of nine percent, that's with your health insurance and other increases. Your utilities, I kept flat, liability, I kept flat, workman's comp, flat, and supplies and materials, I kept flat. They're flat for now. That doesn't mean they will stay flat, but they're flat for now. Other considerations, we constantly look at what our enrollment projections are. Is there a school that might need an extra staff member? Are there too many staff members at one building? How do things lay out when we look at the enrollment? We also look at capital projects. We have a ten-year long-range facility plan, which is nice, helps guide us with our aging buildings. When you have hundred-year-old buildings, it's nice to try and get a map and a footwork so that you're not doing emergency work. The other part is our unknown federal and state cuts and prorations. We have in here what we know as of now, but we don't know what there is yet to come. The other thing that I forgot to put on there that I thought of is Cook County has recently come out and said they are, they know already that the August, we get taxes, tax revenue twice a year in August, and then we get the rest in February, March. We know already, Cook County has come out and said the August bills will be delayed, so that August payment is definitely going to be delayed. We are in a position where we have a fund balance that we will be okay. There are other districts that I know that will not be okay if they do not get funding. Ernesto, we'll go to the last one, my last slide on there. Sorry, FY twenty-six draft. Okay, there are two columns on here. You might say, why do you have two columns on here? And do you really mean to have the same number in both columns? This takes into consideration all of the assumptions that we just talked about. But can you go down to the bottom of the second page? Wait, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Go back to the bottom of the first page. You'll see all the zeros lined up? Thank you. Those are what we already know of the CARES money that's going to be zeroed out for next year, that will not be coming in. And then go to the bottom of the second page. Okay, the reason I did this twice is the budget on the left, they're both the same budget, but the budget on the left, you'll notice where it says capital projects, fund sixty, is two and a half million. We have, with our capital projects plan, have been budgeting two and a half million to do our buildings. With the education center, we know that that amount is going to be higher, so it's going to be closer to ten million, which will put a surplus, I'm sorry, a deficit budget that will come forward to be approved. However, we have that in our fund balance, so we're not negative, negative. That's where money will come in to rearrange and restructure. But we still will then project that we'll have fifty-seven million of a fund balance, which is a good fund balance. Okay, so I got those. I'm sorry, I have a tickle. On the agenda, you'll see two things on the agenda, on the consent agenda. One of them is item E, which is the renewal for organic life, which is our food service provider, our food service company. Last year, you approved year, the beginning of the contract. It's a five-year contract, but the way the state does it is it's a five-year contract and then it's four one-year renewals. So it's not like fi, it's not like nine on top of it. It's, you're approving five years, but every year after the first year, you have to approve year one, year two, year three, year four. So this is year one of that renewal. So next year, we'll bring it forward again, year two. We have consistently had great service, great food. The families have loved it, the kids have loved it, students are eating. It's just, it's been a very positive experience, so I definitely recommend that. The other item that I wanted to call your attention to is item G, which is to approve the asbestos abatement at Emerson Elementary. That was, that's for the, this upcoming summer. And that work is set to begin right after school is out, right when they're done. And I think I got to the rest of my report. Thanks, Mary.
All right, and that concludes the superintendent's report.
Can I ask a question? Can you just explain a little bit more about the fund balance and like why have it in the red if we have it, if there's a shortfall? Like, why is it necessary to even display that if we have the money? Like, where is the money? Why is it not on there?
I'm showing it there just so that you can see that, that, that's where, when you look at direct expenditures, revenues for the year.
So we're talking in the fiscal, next fiscal year?
And then next fiscal year.
So then, then money will be?
It'll be transferred in.
Okay, just, that was all?
Yeah, thanks. And just to forewarn, it will be this year, it'll be this year and likely next year because it's split into where the, similar kind of deficit, but the money is there, but it's, it's where the bills and the, where the payments fall in.
Sure.
And then we'll be back. But that's why I showed the one on the left, because I wanted you to see, we are in the, we're budgeting within our means, we're spending within our means.
Got it.
I won't do the two thing going forward. But I like the way it kind of explains that.
Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, I have a question, and just a follow-up. I am happy to hear that we have positive experience and positive feedback from our families and students about the food. How do we hear about it? Is there some kind of survey, or how do we hear that positive feedback?
So I've had two, two things. We had a parent meeting that Janelle ran, and she brought parents in, and parents were talking about positive things about how the, how the food service was going along. Part of the protocol with the state is Tony Legere and I go to, around to schools and we visibly, and we actually went and talked with the kids, which was really cute. That was a great part of my days, going and talking with the kids, and they loved it. They had great things to say.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, president's report, finance.
We met today to discuss everything that Jenny just reviewed, and then we also approved the minutes from our April twenty-third meeting.
Thank you, policy.
In policy, we just had a number of first reads, and I would encourage the board to take a look at them if they have any questions or any things they would like to add or omit or whatever, let us know.
Thank you, legislative report.
Yes, I'd like to highlight two bills that were passed in the House and the Senate. House Bill three seven seven two by Lightford would prohibit K through two expulsions, requiring superintendents to approve three-day suspensions. The House passed nine bills, but that's the one that I found most notable for our, in our current situation. There is another one, though, that also requires school districts to adopt a cell phone policy. And in the Senate, there's SB four zero five by Johnson. This one requires legislation to provide school counseling services that, as they work to address the needs of all students without regard, without regard to citizenship status. And there was like a technical change in the wording of with.
Without regard.
And moved to without. So those are the, I guess, three bills that I definitely wanted to highlight for this month.
Thank you. Correspondents?
Oh, we had one email.
Thank you. Mental health awareness month. Do we have?
Yeah, I just wanted to take some time to acknowledge Mental Health Awareness Month. May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and I would just like to express my heartfelt gratitude for the incredible dedication that our school staff has shown in supporting the mental health and well-being of our students. I think from the moment students step onto the bus each morning, they are greeted by caring drivers who set that positive tone. And our teachers and paraeducators go above and beyond to create a welcoming, inclusive classroom where students feel valued and safe to learn. They have skillfully woven social, emotional learning into their daily instruction, helping students to develop those crucial skills for managing emotions, building relationships, and making responsible decisions. When conflicts arise, our staff members step in with patience and wisdom to mediate disputes, teaching students how to resolve differences constructively and maintain healthy peer This comprehensive support network extends throughout all of our buildings. I've seen it firsthand, my own students came through the schools here. Nurses provide not just physical care, as you've seen, but also emotional comfort during difficult moments. And social workers connect families with vital community resources or offer individual and group support to help students navigate academic and personal challenges. Administrators, custodians, cafeteria workers, all office staff contribute to that warm and supportive atmosphere that makes our schools feel like a true community, and I think we've seen a lot of that here tonight. I would also like to elevate those efforts that are, to identify students who may need additional support or facilitate appropriate referrals for families and demonstrating that deep commitment that our district has to addressing the whole child. This holistic approach to student well-being creates an environment where students can truly learn and flourish, and I'm just profoundly grateful for each person who contributes to making our school, our schools a place where students can feel seen, supported, and empowered to succeed. Having been given his permission, I would like to share the thoughts of my youngest son, who suffers from depression and anxiety and has benefited from the support of our incredible staff here in D one hundred. He said, "The help I got from my social workers and teachers got me through some of my most difficult days. If and when I needed them, they were there for me. I always knew I had a place to go when I was not sure what to do and when I was struggling the most. They got me through it and made me feel safe, respected, and cared for. I took their guidance with me to Morton West, and I found that I felt comfortable and ready to advocate for myself when I got there. They helped me prepare for high school, which was a big frightening thing in my mind. I am grateful to them all." I don't think I can articulate what a comfort it is to me to know that my son had what he needed during his school day, and anyone who struggles with their mental health or loves someone who does knows how invaluable that is. So thank you to all who helped to keep our schools a safe haven for our students in any capacity. And also take care of yourselves and all of your mental health this summer. I'm sure you can all use a break. And happy teacher appreciation.
Thank you for sharing that. That reminds me of just what Mary Ellen Connolly shared about love and joy for everyone. I, we believe that our students need it every single day, but just as much our staff needs it sometimes. I remember when my children were in middle school, at the time Marty was a social worker, and I can never thank him enough that every morning, he would stop in my classroom to see how I was doing. Before he went to work, he would stop in my classroom to see how I was doing because of the struggles that I was going through with my own children. So all of you, like, as, at the time, I was a second-grade teacher, so not only our students needed, but also our staff. So just remember that everyone needs love and joy, and we have to continue with that. And remembering that everyone has a family, and everyone goes through different issues different ways, and we have to accept and support one another. So thank you for bringing that up. Public comments. Individuals appearing before the board are expected to follow the guidelines outlined in Board Policy two, two thirty.
I am Third Ward Alderman, Richard Leja. And I always say, this is, is the heart of the Third Ward. But I think after tonight, seeing all the wonderful people that have passed through D one hundred, I think I would now say, D one hundred must be the heart of Berwyn. And thank you all who supported these wonderful people. I want to invite everyone to a flag retirement ceremony I am hosting this Saturday with the City of Berwyn, Tom O'Brien, Troop and PAC Thirty-two, the Combined Veterans of Berwyn, at O'Brien the Cleaner, outside O'Brien the Cleaner in his side lot, Saturday, May thirty-first, nine AM, sixty-nine fifteen Stanley Avenue. There'll be veterans there, they'll be talking about their lives and what they've gone through. Scouts will give talks on what they're doing. Some of them will be there to get points for their Eagle Scouts. They'll be doing a retiring the flag. So what retiring the flag is, a flag retirement ceremony is a respectful method of disposing of a worn-out, damaged American flag, ensuring it is not treated disrespectfully. The preferred method, as outlined by the United States Flag Code, is burning the fag, flag ceremoniously. So that's what they'll be doing. It's really, really amazing to see. So if anyone could make it, it'd be great to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Action items, consent agenda. Items may be removed from the consent agenda under request of any one member. Items not removed may be adopted by general consent without debate. Removed items may be taken up either immediately after the consent agenda or placed later on the agenda at the discretion of the board.
Caballero, I'd like to pull aside an item. I don't know what letter it is, but it's the school improvement plan for Piper. Can we pull that out of the consent agenda?
Do we remember? It's D. D? Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, any other items? Okay, so what, the way we're gonna do, we're going to, whoever wants to make a motion to adopt all items except D, and then we can decide either we want to vote on it separately or we want to postpone it for another time. Can?
Go ahead. Yes.
Piper is, was identified as a targeted school this year, and this year was a planning year for them to develop a school improvement plan based on the Illinois State Board of Education guidelines. This is the plan that they developed in collaboration with their school improvement team. This plan, because of their targeted status, does have to go for board approval, and it does need to be approved this month so that it can be uploaded into the ISB website. It follows the plan. We worked with a consultant from ISB. They reviewed the plan. They said it's one of their strongest plans that they have seen, and Piper is very proud of their plan.
So I have a question. So we have to vote on it, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
So we have to accept what they have recommended?
Well, we did not, I didn't, this is on the agenda, I did not receive any questions about this plan to address any concerns that were on the plan. And yes, it does have to be uploaded for ISB in the month of May to meet the requirement. This aligns with the plan that Ms. Piper Simpson presented to the full board during her school spotlight as well. This is just the documented plan that needs to be approved by the board. So the way that the agenda is, as you just outlined, we would need to vote on the consent agenda, and then we would need to vote on that item separately.
Caballero, if I may, I just have a couple questions about the process then. So we would vote on the consent agenda, and then after that, can we discuss the Piper plan? Okay.
Yes, so can, do we have any motions to approve the consent agenda without item D?
I'll motion, I'll motion.
Any second. I'll second. Thank you. Your call.
Irony, Dranth?
Aye.
Jimenez?
Aye.
Steinfeld?
Aye.
Caballero?
Aye.
Butler?
Aye.
Palace?
Aye.
Gonzalez? Aye. Motion carried.
Thank you. Okay, so now we can have a discussion on letter D or item D.
Okay, if I may, I do have a couple questions. I'm new here, Mary, forgive me, I didn't know I was supposed to ask you about consent agenda items, but now I know for next time. But I was looking over this, and I have a couple questions. So the first question is, why are the, I don't want to say targeted, because it's a targeted school. Why are, why is the percentage for expectation for meeting or exceeding standards so low?
So the staff looked at the school's greatest area of need based on data that was available at the time, so they looked at NWEA, looked at past IAR reports, and based on their greatest area of need, that's how they identified the targets that they were going to work on
Respectfully, that's not the question I asked. I understand, you know, what you just explained, but I'm wondering why the projected or expected or desired rate of students meeting and exceeding is so low for both, for math and ELA.
So they looked at, as B explained, they looked at the data of where they were and needed to set a realistic goal for improvement from where the actual data was.
Sorry, I'm toggling between the Illinois School Report Card and the SIP. So where the data was that got them into targeted status, I'm trying to pull that up. So ELA was twenty-eight percent and math was thirty-one percent.
But that's not, that, this is, the, the plan is around the subgroup that was targeted, which is EL. So not having that data in front of me, I, I don't want to misrepresent. I also don't have Ms. Piper Simpson here, who is the principal, but I don't want to misrepresent her, the group, the work of that group. But the target, the group that was targeted for this plan is EL. So that data piece would be based on improving the EL subgroup.
That makes sense. I, if you could indulge me, I don't think that's what the plan says, though. On the, on the first page of the plan, it says the three priorities, and one of those priorities is the EL subgroup. But then, when you go to the next couple pages where they actually outline the goals, they don't mention the EL subgroup. And it's just, you know, a goal for ELA and a goal for math. So for example, for, for ELA, the goal is for students to, for forty percent of students to meet or exceed in math. And then in the school report card, the ELA meets and exceeds status was twenty-nine percent. So...
So that would be setting a goal of improving from twenty-nine percent to forty percent?
Right. So are you telling this board that that's a realistic achievable goal, and anything more than that would be unrealistic?
What I'm saying is that the group, that, there is an entire team, which you can see listed on the page, of educators, including staff from Piper, who analyzed all of their data, worked with a consultant from, from ISB, and created these goals together in partnership that would be reasonable expectations for improvement at Piper.
Okay, so any meaning that I ascribe then, where, you know, if you're saying realistic, and then I'm saying, well, then does that mean it's unrealistic to expect more? That's not what you're saying. You're saying that this, this is what the ISB consultant advised?
Again, if you can see, I'm like the school improvement planning team. I was not... Again, if you can see on the School Improvement Planning Team, I was not on the School Improvement Planning Team, so I do not want to misrepresent what the School Improvement Planning Team's work was to come to that conclusion. We obviously want all of our students to be successful and have to high standards for achievement, but we also know that realistically, there's growth, students need to move from various levels within, so if we're talking about math, we're looking to increase students who are in yellow to orange, and orange to, so we want to keep moving students forward. So these goals were set by this team, including, you can see all the people that were on there, special ed coordinator, teachers, who worked together to develop this plan. And this is the, as B said, a plan that Piper is proud of and feels will help them continue to grow through the SIP process.
Thank you, and thank you for taking me through that. I did look at it, and I did see the team, so, but thank you for highlighting that for me. I think that's all the questions I have.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Any other questions? No? Okay. So now we, I need a motion to approve item D, and a second.
I'll motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Jimenez?
Aye.
Steinfeld?
Aye.
Dranth?
Aye.
Palace?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Butler?
Aye.
Caballero?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Public comments. Individuals appearing before the Board are expected to follow the guidelines outlined in Board Policy 230. Seeing none. Board member comments?
Yes, please. You know, I'm just gonna keep talking, wanted to give me a microphone. I wanted to say thank you for a very, very effective, I think, and successful school board meeting. This was my first, and I want to thank my fellow board members, I want to thank Ms. Dr. Havas and Dr. Maldonado for the Policy Committee as well, so, and thank you, Madam President. Nice meeting.
Thank you. I want to say thank you to all the retirees, and I know they are not here, so I have a connection with every single one of them. I remember meeting Mr. Dillon the first day of school, as I was a teaching assistant here at Heritage at the time, on his first day. I worked with his students at that time, and other students in that team, which was 7A. So I'm so grateful for all that he has done for the Heritage family and our students in our community. Kathy O'Connor, we have been, we worked together as coworkers when I was a receptionist, and she was already the secretary at, at Urban School. Teresa Pendebill, Dennis Pier, and Ellen Ross, of course, we worked as coworkers when I was here a teacher. Señor Guadalupe de la Viva, thanks, thanks to him, Heritage has been up to date and cleaned every single day. Mary Ellen Connolly helps so many families in our community. I have seen her work firsthand, and the impact that her, Dum's body has made in our community personally, and our family. And I know that her love and joy for every single students and the families is immense. I, family members have joined those good Moms Day out, and it's an amazing opportunity. So if you can donate to the organization, I would greatly encourage you to do so, because they have done enormous work in the family, and, and in other communities, and how much impact have done in our community, especially our students in District 100. So thank you to all the retirees for all the dedications to our students, and all the administrators for your support of our students and our staff. Anyone else?
As a very tired mom, with a very busy calendar, with all of the end of the school year activities that are going on, I would like to thank all of the administrators, all of the teachers, and everyone that is involved in putting those events together, and rounding up all the kids, and rounding up all the parent volunteers, because it really, it's something that my children look forward to, and I know that it helps create those memories. So not only are you teaching really important things to them, but you're helping them create wonderful memories, and giving parents an opportunity to, to get a glimpse into the, into the world of school, and to create school memories along with their children. So thank you for all that you do. I'm sure you're just as exhausted as all the parents, but it is greatly appreciated, and your hard work is seen. So thank you.
I want to echo the sentiments of President Jimenez around the retirees. I too know many of them personally, and there's a lot of expertise and advocacy that are leaving the district, but I'm grateful that they were here, and hopefully their mentorship, which I know they've mentored plenty, will continue on with them.
Okay. That's it. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll motion to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Your call. Ironee?
Aye.
Steinfeld?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Butler?
Aye.
Caballero?
Aye.
Dranth?
Aye.
Palace?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good summer, and hope to see you back in June, or not, because you're, some of you are on vacation.